I just wanted to make sure your gang got out of the elevator.
Alright, it's 10 o'clock, we'll go ahead. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for everything that you have done for each and every one of us, or we thank for the rain that's going to come soon. Or we praise you for your goodness and mercy to each and every one of us as you sent your son down the cross for our sins and gives us an opportunity to have eternity with you. We pray, Lord, for our community today that you would bless and strengthen and encourage them, or that the earthquakes would cease and not be damaging our homes and businesses. We pray, Lord, for every entrepreneur that you would bless them today, that you would help the court today to make good decisions for our community. We thank you for all that you provide in Jesus. Amen.
Praise the religion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and God indivisible, where liberty and justice thrive. Honor the Texas flag. Praise the religion to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate you all being here today. This time, any person with business before court has scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court on formal election to be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
I have something to say. This weekend, we had a flood at our building. A few of y'all heard aware, 5:00 Sunday morning dispatch called and said they saw water running down our hallway. And part of the RO system malfunctioned and flooded the break room, a large area of the hallway, a large area of Judge Webb's office, which is right next to the break room. Across the hallway, got two offices, Jeremy's office and one of my clerks. The walls are wet, the sheetrock's wet. We had Triple Eight come out yesterday. We tried to extricate the water as much as we could. Sunday morning, the carpet on top surface was dry, underneath still wet. Probably, when they say six to eight inches up the wall, the sheetrock is wet on all the surrounding walls. So we have a big issue going on. Triple Eight has, I believe, eight fans down there right now and a dehumidifier trying to get as much water, get everything dried as we can. So we won't have mold issues. But that carpet, I believe, when the building was remodeled in 2011 or '12, carpet was in there, it's very stained. We've had it cleaned multiple times. So we need to explore other options. I mean, it's to the point that it needs to go. And as wet as it was, it's going to start turning loose from the floor. The tile in the break room as well has been wet so many times, it's just bloating. It's the old 12 by 12, I guess asbestos tile. I'm not sure, it's not asbestos, but it's the old, and it's not even commercial tile. But it's turned loose from the floor. So we have, you know, quite a few issues that we need to deal with, so.
And it was hot water. It was hot or warm water. And it stinks in there.
It also sprayed up underneath the cabinet. So now our countertop is swollen up. The laminate is cracking at the seams, probably almost a quarter inch just from being saturated. So just to give y'all heads up, we're fixing to try and compile some numbers as economically as we can to get this fixed. But I mean, we really need to take care of this issue.
We'll set a meeting for Tuesday to...
I'm sorry?
We'll set a meeting for next Tuesday
Okay.
to come back and discuss all of that.
Okay. Give y'all a minute for it.
Thank you. And I've got, after you get with me after court, I have a way to stop the smell, the stink, ozone will do it. And then we did it over here at the adult probation. They had mold and mildew and it will sanitize it.
Okay.
And you can do that at night when you're not there.
Okay.
And I'll get that to you as soon as I can. It's in big space right now, but I'll go through.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Be ready to come in next Tuesday. Alright. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Can you present project scheduling and staffing?
We're doing it. We'll finish, we'll prime two miles today, shoot it tomorrow, and we'll be off for the week prepping another roof. And we'll be done with all of our projects.
And we are getting our Andrews Heights ready to chip sell. Also, I want to make, we've got agreement, an interloped agreement with the city, as you guys know. They're going to prep that eighth to a mile, quarter of a mile, whatever it is there that goes from the mid, the electric company of the country. Well, it's not right there, it's a little further down. Anyway, it starts down there, I think Chemical Company. And we're going to double chip sell that, prime it, double chip sell at 2132. And then go on over to this Andrews Heights addition and start there. And so we're not ready yet, but we will get as ready as quick as we can to let you know.
Give y'all an update. This weekend is the 100th anniversary celebration of golf course. There's going to be a little celebration at 1:00 PM. So love to have y'all come to that and help us. You can play in the tournament, yeah?
Saturday?
Yes, Saturday. I think they have a couple more spots available for the tournament if you want to play.
Yeah, true.
You can't all be on one team, but... Alright, anything else? We're going to move things around just a little bit. We will go ahead and start with renewal of the TCD RS retirement plan.
Yes, thank you, thank you for having me. Do you like me to stand here? Yes, you're welcome. Okay, I can just... Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, good morning to all of you and thank you for inviting Amy Campbell and I from Austin today. We come representing the Texas County and District Retirement System. And I actually serve as your employer services representative. So I work closely with Misty on here on the data that comes to your desks to consider for your plan. And one of the things that we want to start doing is provide you with an annual update. It's just an overview. And then you have plenty of time to take action, or not, after that. But I thought I'd give you an idea of what action you can take as decision makers and then let you know how your plan is doing. So at any point in time that interrupts me, I certainly would welcome a conversation. What I did is give everybody a folder. I'm going to highlight some very important slides. And then I'm going to look at your plan numbers. But I did want to point out to start today that we're very proud of our system. It's been around since 1967. And we serve over 380,000 Texans. And we're growing every year by about 20 new districts. And so TCD RS provides retirement for all the counties in Texas and governmental entities like appraisal districts, irrigation, navigation, hospital districts and things like that. And we, like I said, we grow about 20 districts a year. If you look at our entire system, we're 89% funded. We take our reserves into consideration, we're 94%. So we're a very strong, well-funded system. And our long-term goal, our investment return goal was 7.6, that's, excuse me, 7.5. But our return over the last 30 years has been 7.6. So we've hit and exceeded that goal. And if you look at our assets, when we pull all our counties and districts together, oh, we have $46 billion in assets. And I'm going to talk today about what we do with that pool of assets and how it works for us. So I do want to start by saying that we are very proud that we fund ourselves. We don't receive any money from the state of Texas. TCD RS invests in our very diverse portfolio. And that's a portion of how we're funded. Actually, that's what drives our success, that's the largest portion. All the counties and districts that are in our system, you get to decide your benefit levels and you fund those benefit levels over the course of the employee's career. And then each employee funds their own retirement. So if you look at the investment returns and your performance and you look at the employers, our counties and districts, and you look at the employees, that's how we fund TCD RS. So we don't receive any money from Texas. We get to stay out of those conversations when it comes to budget and we like to stay out of that. Now, I do travel Texas a lot. I have from north of Waco to Oklahoma, starting with Gardens County to the Piney Woods, that's my area, and then I have Marais and Bronson. So I travel a lot and I'm proud of it because I get to see this beautiful state. But one of the things that I talk about the most, and that's why I'm here to speak to you today, to your court, is that TCD RS is going to be different from other pension systems you know of, from ERS and TRS and TMRS and JRS in our own state and then from pension systems across the country. And if I had to summarize briefly for you this morning why we're different, it's because we're savings-based. The minute you hire an employee from that very first paycheck, they have to start saving for their own retirement. And they don't get a choice not to. They must participate in the system and they're saving for their own retirement over the course of their career. While that's happening, you're responsibly funded. That means that we present to you what percent payroll will fund this plan and you must fund that. And if you can't, you get to adjust your benefits and lower them to experience a cost savings. Or you can increase benefits if you wanted to so. But we tell you what it costs and you pay it every year. And finally, you, the court, gets to decide what's best for your own county. You choose the Scurry County benefits. No one else is, no one else gets a vote in what you offer. So that local control puts it in your hands. And if you look at the fact that you're saving and you're funding it responsibly and you have that local control, that's why we're so well-funded as a system. We're often sought out by systems across the country with, how do you do it? Well, this is how to do it. And we've been designed that way since the late 60s. I thought it would be interesting to tell you that if we look at every person that has a zip code in Scurry County, because we have the county, we have the hospital district, we have the appraisal districts. So we've got three entities in your own area. But anybody with a zip code here, just last year, we paid $3.6 million in benefits. And that's going to those retirees. Well, what does that mean exactly? We study where retirees are going. We have economic impact studies, every four years we update it. And it's, Texas must be a fun place because 96% of the people stay in their own homes. They stay in their neighborhoods. The other 4%, I don't know, maybe they go to Jamaica or Hawaii or I don't know where they're going. But 96% are staying here. So what does that $3.6 million mean? It's coming right back in here to your local communities. So it's important that as you have taken care of your retiree, they put that money right back into your local communities. Very important. When I look at Scurry County as an individual entity, oh, I did want to point out, we have all the counties in Texas vote one. Mollie, they're joined, they're real small. We're hoping to get them, we're really hoping to get them. They want to, so we're hoping. Four joined about six years ago and that was a celebration. And Mollie's also in my area and Amy and I are really hoping that before we retire, they join. But we have all the other counties and districts. And when we look at just Scurry County, your benefit levels are, members are saving 7% of their own money. And by state statute, the range is 4% to 7%. That's what's allowed by the state statute because we are governed by the legislature. So you can have members save 4%, 5, 6 or 7, and this county chooses 7. And that's great because you chose the highest that allow members to save the most for their own retirement. If you lower it to 6, 5 or 4, you certainly could. It would be less expensive for the county, but members would be saving less over their career and their benefits would be smaller. So you have them saving the most. And if I were to talk about all the counties and districts, most are at a 7% because most want their members to save the most they can for retirement. When it comes to the match by state statute, it begins at 100%, which is dollar for dollar. And it goes as high as 250%, which is $2.50 for every one of their dollars. And Scurry County is at 175. So you're offering $1.75 for every one of their dollars and all they have to do is become eligible and then the money is theirs. And they get it for the rest of their life. So this benefit is very, very stable and unique and promising in that it funds for the rest of their livelihood. All they have to do is become eligible. And in order to become eligible, they have to hit one of three rules. They don't need a trifecta, just one. If they become age 60 and they have five years of service, that's your resting period here. Five years with age 60, they can retire. Or the second rule is the rule of 80. If you add their age plus their years of service and that equals 80, they can retire for life with TCD RS. And the last rule is 30 years of service. If they have 30 years and they don't have to be consecutive, you hire an 18-year-old and they move on, but come back and move on. So it's just one of the three. Now, your restiness is five years and that can't be changed. That's the lowest in our system and that's permanent. But you all can lower the rule of 80 to the rule of 75 if you wanted. That's an option the court has. The other option the court has is to go from 30 years to 20. If you wanted to lower it to 20, you certainly could. And why would that be up for discussion? Well, maybe for a retention rule. If you want to keep employees and you kind of make the benefits a little bit more enticing, it only takes 20 years to retire, or the rule of 75, they might hit it sooner. Oftentimes, you tend, you find people who want to stay a little longer because they can see that, the end of that race a little sooner. So maybe for a retention rule. But you have those three. And if ever you wanted to look at lowering any of those two rules, you just let me know and Misty and I can look at some numbers and show you what it would cost. Now, I did mention that we are not funded by Texas and I also said that I talk about how we're funded. So we have a very diverse portfolio across and within asset classes. And while I myself am not an investment manager, I'm an account manager for you all and I bring the news to you. And the news is very positive in that over the course of our history, we've outpaced our benchmarks and we're doing very well. And our goal is 7.5 each year. We know we're not going to hit 7.5 each year. Some years, we're going to knock it out of the park and do much better. Some years, we're going to hit it. And some years, we're going to be negative because that's how markets perform. And we're aware of that. We don't chase annual returns, we look at the long term. And in our 30-year history, we've hit 7.6. But I got even better news, this slide that you're convenient, you can look at on page six. It actually gives you our exact returns. And last, in the post-market, 11.5, much higher than 7.5. That was a great year. And what happens when we do better than that 7.5? Well, two things. First, we pass out those gains to the employers, all the counties and districts. And second, we put money in a reserve fund. And that reserve fund is very important because when you look at the crash of '08, our reserves got us out of that real quick. And the reserves are there for rainy days and they come. But we were prepared because we look to the future and we always anticipate what's to come. And so these are actually our returns. You see what happened in '08, it took us outside of our bandwidth, sure did. But then the subsequent recovery took us right back up again and then we performed just as anticipated. And that bandwidth is designed with intention. We know we're not going to hit 7.5 every year. We will hit plus or minus against that. And as long as we stay within that acceptable level of risk, our portfolio is doing just as it's supposed to be performing. So that's what we're happy for. Now, I did want to point out your specific numbers. Even better news, your cost went down. Why? Because of investment gains and because of demographic changes here. Perhaps salaries went up. If you gave raises and your salaries increased, that's helpful for you because more money went into the pool. If people quit and they terminated employment, they moved on to other pastures and they pulled out their money, they forfeited match, the match stays here. They only get the match if they become eligible and choose to retire. It's Scurry County money until they retire. So if they work, if they left, they forfeited the match. So you've got, you've got salary increases, you've got match forfeitures, you've got investment gains, you've got all kinds of positive things that are happening for the county. So I'm here to report that your cost went down. This calendar year, you're paying 10.42% of payroll for your level of benefits. Well, next year, it went down to 10.18, just a little bit, nothing largely significant, but it's still going down. And actually, that's the design of the plan. In a close 20-year amortization, it's intended to go down over time. We want to get you to have higher assets and lower liabilities and aim toward 100% funded ratio. That's the goal long-term. And you all are in a 94.4% funded ratio. You're doing excellent. If I were to ask the opinion of outside rating agencies like Fitch and S&amp;P, for example, they would probably comment that 80% funded and hires healthy. And you are 94.1, so good job. And you're qualified. Now, I did mention you all have local control. With that said, you can tell us, you know, TCD? We're going to go ahead and keep paying that 10.42. We paid it this year, it fits our budget well. Even though we're only required to pay you 10.18, we're going to be left to keep paying what we're paying. And that's called an elective rate. You're electing to pay a little higher than what's due. Why would you do that? You build the cushion a little bit more, you put more assets away, you increase that funded ratio, you're basically saving for your own rainy day. Because we don't know how each year looks. Some years are better than others. Some years, we don't pass off gains. We don't, we lose, that's the way it goes. And some years, you have demographics that aren't in your favor. You might have more people stay than we anticipated. You might have more people retire, you know, in a group, in a group for smaller counties. So you look at demographics, you can't always control human behavior, but you can responsibly fund your plan, which you have been. And even an extra layer of icing, you can fund the assets a little bit faster. And you don't have to. But in my observation, more and more counties and districts are choosing elective rates when their rate drops because it's the perfect time to do it and because why not start building a cushion? And it's always a good choice. Even if next year, your rate drops again, you don't have to stay at the 10.42. You're only required to pay what's due, what's required. But you've had that local control to decide that. I'd like to, you know, insert a little example here. I had another county approaching me and say, Erica, we like giving cost of living adjustments, we call it COLAS, to retirees. How can we fund those? And we said, well, why don't you start setting an elective rate? And why don't you work for a couple of years on building that cushion? So then when you pass COLAS, because they cost, they're not free. A lot of that money is coming from the cushion and it doesn't change your required rate that much. And it's far more affordable. So a strategy that that county chose to do is set that elective rate with an intention of passing COLAS more frequently for their retirees. Speaking of COLAS, I did a little bit of research for you all. Scurry County has passed one cost of living for retirees. That was in 2009 and that was a 2% flat rate, which means everybody got a 2% bump on their money that year. Now, the raise itself is permanent. So if I made $1,000, you passed a 2% flat rate, I made $20 raise, so now my check is $1,020. I'm still getting $1,020 because the raise itself is permanent. But that bump only happened that one time. There's never been another raise or another bump given to retirees. So that's an approach this court can look at in the future. If you'd like to look at some of those, you just let me know. She has a calculator that'll show her how to run all kinds of options. And in the data that you have to keep with you today, there are two types of COLAS. There's a flat rate, you give everybody the same bump, it's 1, 2 or 3%. And then there's CPI, that's Consumer Price Index COLA. That restores lost purchasing power. So let's say you pass a 40% CPI. You're restoring 40% of lost purchasing power from when that member retired. And so those are options too. COLAS are funded by the county, so they are, they do come out of your budget. So what we do is we provide, what does it do to your rate? And we provide you the dollar cost because this court can pre-fund it. You can send the money in that calendar year, pay for the COLA upfront. It doesn't impact your rate because you paid it in advance. You have that option. But if you don't want to, you can roll it into your rate and it takes 15 years to pay off a benefit increase. It's a closed amortized period and your rate will either stay or wiggle or maybe go up a little bit as you fund that benefit increase. So you do have options and we have a pretty neat calculator to show you how to do that. With that said, I want a couple more things to mention and then I'd like to open the floor for questions. Employee participation. If you have a permanent employee, even if they only work two hours a week, but they're permanent, there's no ending. Maybe they work on, you know, the grounds of the court every Saturday. But they're permanent, there's no ending. They're not a temporary employee, they're not a seasonal, they weren't just hired for elections. They're permanent. They must participate in TCD RS by state statute. If they're temporary, they're only here for a summer or maybe they're here for just one year. Or they're here for elections, they're temporary, they don't participate. So we just want to remind our decision makers about that. And then rehiring former employees, I get that question a lot. And sometimes we retire and the grass isn't as green. I had a lady tell me something really funny. She says, you know, young lady, you know why the grass is always green on the other side? I said, why? She says, because there's always more renewal over there. I said, well, I love you, darling. Okay, thank you. That's an interesting perspective. She was the one who called me and said, I want to come back to work. Retirement wasn't what I thought. And I said, well, you certainly can. You can actually hire your retirees back to work if you'd like. That is your prerogative. They're so well knowledgeable of what they did. But there are some rules to doing that. When they retire, the decision must be to go off into the sunset and not look back. That decision has to be bona fide. You can't take them to the local coffee shop and say, you can retire, we'll bring you back. That's collusion, can't do that. It's got to be a bona fide separation. They can't leave a picture of their family on the desk. They're not returning, they're going out to retire. So once that's a bona fide separation, they have to wait one calendar month. So if they retire in January, the entire month of February must pass and they get a return in March. So it's not 30 days, it's a full calendar month. And you absolutely can hire your retirees. And all that means is they're in check never stops. They still get their retirement for life. You hire them back so they start a new account all over again. They're already eligible at that new account because they're already eligible, they've already met it. But that new account has $0. You see, they have to build it up again because they're getting their check, never interrupted. This new account starts from zero. And then one day, they're going to get two retirements because they have to retire a second time. And they'll get two checks. One of the questions we get is, can we combine those tests now? They're two separate experiences. They just get paid twice on the same day, they get two checks. This one, the big one, this is probably smaller, it probably didn't work a full career, but gave them something to do to come back to. But we get this question every week. Hire my retirees, as long as it's bona fide and one calendar month separates it, we absolutely can. And if that's something that you choose to do, that's under the purview of your decision-making portfolio. So with all that said, I know that's a lot, but I really wanted to open the floor for questions on anything I've mentioned and anything I didn't that you might be curious about.
Thank you. I love the retirement that you guys help supplement, Social Security. Because then, all those people that otherwise, like myself and anyone else that's working, because Social Security is not security and they have to go on welfare or other benefits around the state or whatever, then we as taxpayers have to fund that for those people. Whereas y'all supplement Social Security. And really, even TD CRS is not looked at as a all-in-one retirement. It supplements Social Security, but it may or may not be enough. And so really, the employee needs to invest
Yes.
their money in other things
Absolutely.
so that when they do get to retirement, they are able to truly retire without worrying about someone else helping them with that. And so what y'all do, if y'all would do that for all of the other retirements, state retirements, goodness, they wouldn't be in the shape they are in today. And so we appreciate you very much.
You're very welcome. I couldn't have said better, Commissioner, to have multiple sources of income for all of us here in this country now it's required to have, to be able to live, you know, long-term. And we are one of those sources. And we are a prominent source. And it's because of your funding and because of the planning you're offering. Evaluating annually is very important. And we offer evaluation each year. So we're looking every year at what is Scurry County offering? And what do they need to pay responsibly to fund it? And this isn't something that's assumed or that's pushed off. It's done every year so you can rest assured you're responsibly funding this because it's such a dependent, permanent, to your point, one of many, hopefully, sources of income.
So there you go.
So we really want to make sure they don't depend on this. And you are offering great benefits with $1.75. If this court would like to look at what increasing that match? You can go up in any increment you'd like, as high as 250 and as long as it's a multiple of five. So if you wanted to go from 175 to 180 or perhaps 205 or perhaps 230, you certainly can do that.
How many counties are at a higher level?
So across the board, if you look at most counties and districts, it's two hundred percent. That's what most counties do. We have some outliers at the two fifty. Often those counties don't offer Social Security at all. So what they do to offset that is to have a higher match. Examples include appraisal districts and things like that who don't participate in Social Security, some of them don't. Or hospital districts and things like that. But most of the counties and districts across the board is a two hundred match because two to one is really strong. Really kind of gives them a solid benefit, it increases it a little bit. And so that is something this county can certainly look at.
Retention.
And it's great retention, absolutely. And you get to compete with the counties around you, with employers in your own zip code that you offer that match. What we're also hearing from our employers is that new hires are asking, do you have TCD or S? If the answer is yes, what's your match? Because they are now comparing against each other. When you look at other districts, we have so many districts joining us. And when I was higher, we were in the six hundreds, now we have eight hundred and seventy plus. So we're growing and people are understanding TCD and they're learning. And they say, well, what's your match? And what is your employee deposit rate? Is it at seven? Because they know if I save the most, my benefit will be higher. You're absolutely right.
So plan changes are due by December fifteenth?
Yes, sir, every year. I know your budgets are sooner, but for us, it's December fifteenth. And a plan change would be, do you want to change the employer match? Do you want to change what members are saving for themselves? Do you want to pass a COLA? Or simply, do you want to put an elective rate in place? Even if you were to stay at the ten point four two and not go down, that's telling us a plan change. Because if you don't tell us, the system assumes you're immediately going to play the new rate, which is ten point eighteen. So all of those would be examples of plan changes. And as long as we have it by December fifteenth, I require your signature, Judge. It's a one-page document that I can produce for Misty to bring to court. And then, I don't need the minutes, I just need for you to recognize what day in court your court approved that change.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Misty, did you want to speak to this? Do you have any questions?
No, I think she's covered everything. I mean, it's just, it'll be a court decision as to where y'all want to go. I can get any numbers that you want. If you want different numbers, just let me. And like Erica said, she'll show me on the calculator. I have a really neat calculator. But I'll give you a bunch of options, just let me know what your thoughts are. So I can get the numbers for y'all.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. You're welcome anytime. I think Misty said maybe an annual update. So I'll get to visit again. We enjoyed, we enjoyed your restaurant at The Giga's called Amorin. And a little too much, I think I had too much pasta, but it was so delicious. Oh, much as well. So thank you for having us and we'll be back soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
All right, so let's go ahead and move to receive bids on fuel station renovation. Who's here for that?
Because y'all are handy.
If you remember, we have some things that are required by TCEQ to get done over there. And we were talking about connecting the two diesel tanks and the two gas tanks. And that's what we requested. So Kobe Brothers Contracting submitted a price. And it's demo the sufficient concrete over the tanks. Excavate uncovered four-inch bunks. Stockpile the existing gravel on site for reuse. Install new double-wall siphon piping from tank one to tank two. And a separate siphon from tank three to tank four. Perform the inspections with TCEQ, that's kind of important. Replace the four or five-gallon spill buckets, which one of them we know is leaking. Install four STP containment sump via flange adapter, backfill and resurface with four-inch concrete with rebar twenty-four inch on the center. And the total cost is seventy-one, seven, seventy-six. And the other one is from D and H United Fueling Solutions. Same basic, same information. Their price is seventy-six, seven, ninety-five, thirteen. So the difference is right at five hundred, five thousand dollars. And Kobe Brothers is just five thousand dollars lower than D and H.
Is, are you with D and H? Or Kobe Brothers? Kobe Brothers, okay. And so talk to us about the thickness of the cement. I know that it's usually six inches. I know that cement a yard is like a hundred and twenty-five, thirty dollars a yard. So the less cement we use, the better off we are. Sidewalks are three inches. I say better off we are, we're better off price-wise. So that would, one inch less would save us several amount of money. And this is never driven on. It is only walked on. And so do you see a problem with three-inch cement on top of that?
No, sir.
Okay. And so that'd be easily figured as to the cost. Be the same amount of rebar, but less cement.
Yeah, we'll give it value there for sure.
Perfect. Other than that, if they're bidding, they bid on the specs that we sent them, I would make the motion that we accept the bid from Kobe Brothers.
Please.
And.
You second?
And let.
And allow the judge to sign the agreement.
Please. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Let's see the number one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Let's go ahead and knock out the travel, update travel rates. I'm gonna let Angela speak to this. We have looked at this recently. Because it's changing.
Yes. Currently, our travel rates are, well, mostly we're talking about the per diem. It's thirty-six for the first and last days, forty-eight for the in-between days of going to conference or something like that. That covers like the meals and incidentals. However, due to all of the everywhere rates and everything coming up, I was looking at the, what is this, the U.S. General Services Administration website. And this is one that most of the counties within Texas refer to. And you can select Texas and then do a search for the zip code. And it will tell you the per diem rate for that area. And you just go down, I think it has it on that page. Yeah, on that page right there, it has like the daily, your lunch, your dinner, and your incidentals. But if you equal, that all comes up to your, like your first and last day, say for a standard rate is forty-four point five. Our current standard rate for first and last day is thirty-six dollars. And then the middle days is fifty-nine for the in-between days. So our current one is forty-eight. We've had a lot of people, when they go to conferences, come back and say, you know, like the meals. Unless the conference is providing some type of breakfast, lunch, or whatever, they cannot be anywhere there for cheap. It's just what it is. So what I was wanting to is to recommend, instead of having it always changing, to recommend going by the US GSA rate for that zip code. Like you type it in and you put it in, and it will tell you what that rate is for that town.
That's a great idea. So if you go to Dallas, you pay fifty-one, seventy-five a day, the first and last day of travel. Use them as fifty-one, seventy-five, like Austin would be forty-eight. And if it's not listed, it would be forty-four, twenty-five.
And if it's not listed, you can still put in the zip code, it'll allow you to do a search and put the zip code in. It will tell you standard rate forty-four, twenty-five, or whatever it is. So if you're like, well, I don't know, I don't believe that it should be that. You can put it in there and it will tell you exactly what it should be or not be.
And then that adjusts every year?
Yes. Because this one is for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, per diem rates for state of Texas. And this is, the U.S. General Services Administration does this.
And if we go off of this, we don't have to make that change every year it's made?
Right. And I will, we will change it in the personnel policy. And in my policy that we follow the US GSA travel rates, per diem rates. Now, we still have the mileage rates that we follow, whatever the state of Texas does on the mileage rates. And that is in the policy currently. But as far as per diem, it's a little bit different story. And this has been the per diem since before I started here. Twenty, I started in twenty fourteen and this has been the rate. What we've had has been what it's been since I've been here.
Any questions? I think that's, I think that's smart. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the annuals GSA rates for travel per diem for all of the Skory County employees.
So you're all in favor? And we'll continue to follow the US mileage rates. All right, we will, we'll get some smaller things. Go back up to the top and that's how the public hearing for renewal of Canyon Wind Project LLC reinvestment, reinvestment zone. We'll start that at ten thirty-eight P M. Reason that it's a renewal is it's recently expired. Y'all can stick around.
There you go. Got to go.
It's recently expired and we have two applications in that zone. With that being a flatland storage and a canyon storage. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
We'll start the public hearing. And if y'all want, I can, we can go ahead and start kind of discussing what the projects are and then we can go from there. So there's both our best and they are where the battery storage systems. The canyon storage is a hundred and ten million dollar project. Looking at an abatement of eleven hundred dollars per month, per megawatt, a hundred megawatts. We would be receiving payments of a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. The flatland is a hundred and fifteen million dollar value project. And we would be receiving the same amount, eleven hundred dollars per megawatt, for a hundred megawatts, a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. Looking at first payment for canyon being in twenty-eight in the first payment. And for flatland being in twenty-thirty unless the project is completed sooner, then the payments would come sooner. Do you want to discuss it, Andy Robb? Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, so we're looking to co-locate two of the projects. One with the already commercial operation Canyon Wind Project. And then another with the impending Flatland Solar Project. The purpose of the battery storage project is to basically store that excess energy that's created throughout the day for the solar farm. When the wind's blowing, it's to store that excess energy to kind of stabilize the grid and what we're doing. So that's pretty much it. The Canyon Storage Project is set to start construction Q one of twenty twenty-six and the end of year twenty twenty-six is what we're targeting. And then pending on, with the Flatland Solar Project being built in twenty twenty-seven, that storage project will be started, construction in twenty twenty-eight and end the end of the year twenty twenty-eight. But those payments being paid out a couple of years after, as you already communicated. But I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
I, I have no problems with the canyon storage best project on the pipeline. But we're, we're five and a half years out on the canyon, I mean, on the flatland. And my only question would be, is, is there, because of the inflation, you have a reduction in what money is worth? And in five and a half years, that could be a lot. Is it possible that we could get a ten percent increase on the flatland, which would make it about twelve hundred and something? Would, is that something that we can talk about?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the project's far enough out that what, your point's pretty valid. So that's absolutely something we can revisit. Again, it was a first approach in matching these two projects that we're looking to co-locate with these solar wind projects. But absolutely.
Thank you. As to the, are we still in the hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I had a question about these, these agreements with attorneys. They change constantly. And because of my experience that I've had in the past, there are several things in these contracts that I would like to see changed to some degree. One of them is under the agreement or amendment clause that states that, now, this is, this doesn't need to be changed. This is actually awesome, but it needs to be done. It says that within three days prior to the beginning of the project, there will be a liability insurance policy sent to the county for that liability insurance. We will get a copy of that. I guess one question would be, shouldn't the county be an additional insured on that policy? Or maybe even a waiver of subrogation? I don't think the waiver of subrogation would come into play like it does in business, but maybe the, the additional insured. If something happens, you know, with the trucks and things, I mean, we've had some wild things happen out of eleven oh five. Our person knows about. If somebody actually gets killed, then, I mean, the first big pockets they see are the county. And they see you too. But we need that, we need that. We haven't received those policies when we should have. And so certainly, please make sure that we receive those three days prior to the construction. Another thing would be under the maintenance agreement on roads. It's both in the abatement and in the road use agreement. So I think it's fifteen, eighteen in the Roman numerals. Eighteen. And it, it talks about the developer during the time of construction will ensure with their own ability or with the ability of a contractor, someone of their signings or contractors, will keep the roads in good condition. That's not really ever happened. What I would like to see in there is that the county will take care of the roads during construction. We have the equipment. We can do it cheaper than the contractors can. We don't pay taxes for oil and rock, sales tax. They're having to pay a lot more. We can do it cheaper, we can do it by, we have, actually, Commissioner Mitchell has found an engineer over at, that they actually have a county engineer and used to be in the contracting business, but now he's working for the county that has sent a spreadsheet that, that has up-to-date char costs of materials. And certainly, we can come up with a viable amount per hour for equipment. I'd like to see that added in there. If the county doesn't do their job, and I don't think any of us would take care of our roads, I mean, that's our responsibility. We want to be paid to do it. Now, this, the, the one that I've just now finished that wasn't really being able, and they told me we didn't have the equipment. Well, it says in the tax payment agreement that you will take care of it, but they didn't do it. For whatever reason, doesn't matter. They have paid for us to fix those now during the time of construction and then pay us to remediate those roads once construction is finished. And so with that in mind, I'd like to see that, let's talk about that. And, and I'm not saying you have to do it. I'm saying you can leave that in there if somebody's not doing it, not keeping it safe. I don't know what commissioner's going to be here by the twenty, thirty, you know, or whatever time that you do come and do the construction. And y'all's are going to be so much simpler than what, you know, maybe I've seen, except for the solar project. You use a lot of trucks in building solar projects, for sure. But let's talk about it. We want those roads to be safe for our people throughout the time. Now, there, there is one thing that we do need help with and it says, and it never, and it hadn't happened ever, where they actually put the people out there with the signs, with the cones, all the safety measures that need to be used during construction to, and now maybe it happened with you, that those guys were pretty good. to, and now maybe it happened with you, that those guys were pretty good with the, with the wind. And so we don't always get that. Some of them just don't have that ability or they, they're too new to it, the contractors that they hit. But definitely, we had people turning their cars over, I mean, five hundred cars because you have so many workers. Five hundred cars going out there every day and, and we've had three or four turn over at a ninety degree turn. It's got a, a sign that shows curve ahead, but they wouldn't slow down. Finally, I took our own, bought some more cones and put out there and then bought twenty five hundred dollars worth of signs and put out there with flashing lights showing a curve ahead, ten mile per hour, and they finally quit it. You know, so we need help there to make sure, because we don't have the crews, to go out there daily and make sure that those roads are, are, have the signage, have the cones, have the people that are directing, you know, that as those trucks come in to make sure that they're safe. Another thing under that maintenance is that if the developer so desires, the county judge will execute a letter saying that they, that you can use the road. That, that's not a problem, except that that needs to be agreed upon by the road commissioners, by the, by the court. And then we give the judge the power to sign for the court. So I don't think any commissioner, and I don't think that this judge wants to say to, to, to anybody that I'm telling you that you've got the permission to do whatever you want to on those roads. I think it needs to be the commissioners' court, then we give the judge, as we already have done this morning, the power to sign the contract. That's not a problem with us, but we need to all be in agreement. Every, I mean, most of our projects have been, and, and certainly have been great. The people have, I mean, except for the solar project where they bring in five hundred people, that, that's, that's been a test on everybody, let me tell you.
Getting, getting our roads back
Yes.
to the way they're supposed to be is not happening.
We're going to get there. We, we're getting the money. We, we are already planning to read, to totally, completely mill that road, eleven oh five especially. Parts of, of eleven oh one and, and the Camp Frank Road. And we're going to then double chip seal.
Resub the town.
We're, we're going to do it. And so it's been difficult. I mean, I, I had a great crew when I first came into this as a commissioner. And, and what's happened is through cancer, retirement, sickness, I've lost, I've got a brand new crew. And I've got one or two guys that even have any time experience. And so that's what's taken so long. But we're, we've got full crew. They're learning. We're going to get there.
Where, where is the flatland?
Oh, that's, that's out here on Blockline Road. That'd be the easiest for you to understand.
Yeah, that's, that's out there by us. Because they, the, the wind farm used our road, road there path to bring all the stuff in. And so it's just really, I mean, the, the trucks tore some stuff up.
Okay.
And if, if the, the flatland's going to be out there by us, you know, I just, I just, I'm against it.
Yeah. They're, they're going to be going, they're down, they're down Blockline Road. Probably halfway down I think Skyroad 34. And so no, they're not going to be on Road Runner Path.
384 goes from Blockline to sixteen oh nine.
Yes. And so you, you don't have to worry about that. But I'm telling you, they're bringing, these, these guys with these two projects are bringing millions of dollars into our county. And, and all the other, the solar, the, the wind projects that we've done, the, the, what they brought to our community has been astronomical. Has it hurt our roads and stuff? Yes. And has it taken time to get it done? Yes. But we're going to get it done. We, we've got the equipment to do it. We've got the guys here that are agreeing that we'll do, work together, get it done. And, and we're going to. That's what he's been doing right now. And the control has Sean and so it's done.
Yeah, the, the, the windmills, they're on every side of my house. And the noise is horrendous. Is there not any way to shut that? That noise, make it, I mean, it's just.
Those contracts are
We're, we're losing, we're losing as far as I know, three families out there because of what's happened from the, the wind farm. And I'm not leaving. I just have to shut my curtains and, you know, and not look out. That's what we liked having out there was our land. And we don't have it anymore. And then the roads messed up. That's, I mean, I travel it every day. And there's, there's a, a pothole about like this that you have to swerve to miss. But if there's somebody coming at you, you can't swerve. You gotta hit the pothole or stop. And, you know, it's, it's not just on Road Runner Path, but it's on Round Top coming out also. And I don't want this other company coming in and doing the same thing and then us just be stuck with yuck.
I can tell you that every one of us understand what you're saying and we are trying our best to get to those places and to get those places repaired. We are working as fast as we can.
They, they came out and filled it in with some, you know, well, that lasts about a week and then it's gone. So, you know, it, it needs to be redone and redone right.
Yeah. And, and we'll, we'll all do it. We're working on it.
All right. I'm going to hold you to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Blockline's better, but with all the extra traffic, I don't know how long it'll last.
Yeah, Blockline's in bad shape too.
Well, you know, it's, it's been double chip sealed, it's been widened. And I believe it'll last a long time. And we will then, every five years, we're trying to get back to where we're re-sailing those roads every five years. So, because we know that they won't last much more than that. And so we're working as hard as we can to get that done with the, the, all of us have new inexperienced. It's hard to find experienced people. We're, we're fighting the oil field in that air arena. They make a lot more money. We've got, we've got great benefits, but it's not always enough. People want the more pay rather than the benefits, because they don't think they'll ever need them. But guess what? We all did. So we're working on it.
Okay.
Thank you for your answer.
Something to say?
Yes, sir.
On these, uh, agreements, maintenance agreements, road use agreements. They're legal and binding supposedly. And you're saying that you're well aware of they're not keeping the agreements that you wouldn't know the agreement completely.
Right.
No questions asked.
Those that couldn't do it, we work with them. We don't just go out and try to stop them from doing it. They're, they're, they bring too much money into our community. So the thing of it is, is that just like this company that I've just dealt with, the solar company, they have stepped up. They're sending, they're giving us three and a half, eight, three point eight million dollars to fix those roads. And so even though they weren't capable of doing it, or they didn't get the contractors or us to do it and tell us they're going to pay us to do it, they have come through and they've done it in every situation, every time. And so it's always, yeah, we could have went there, we could have went and got the attorneys, the only ones going to win, the attorneys. They've always come through to this day. I didn't know if this one was going to or not. I was really skeptical. But let me tell you, they did. They gave us the money to repair the road and to, starting out to keep it repaired while they're doing their project, this best project, and they're going to pay us to completely remediate the road.
So you're talking about you're getting payments, you specifically, million one time, three million another time. But are you actually using that money for road repairs? And I'm, I'm not talking about going out and buying X amount of pieces of equipment to use for something else or spending that money on anything else. Are you using one hundred percent of any road use agreements, money you get in on actual road repairs?
Whenever I got the one point one million dollars from the wind energy company that you're talking about, I told them I was going to buy the equipment that I needed to repair those roads because that equipment would continue to be there forever, rather than waiting and waiting and waiting and using that for other roads and things. And they said, please do that. And so we are agreeing with that company what we do with that money. And so that's what we do.
There's no way you could use the money to hire, to hire it done if we don't have the personnel here in our county to do it? Can we hire it done?
It would cost us more money to do that. Our people need to be trained and they can't be trained if they don't get out there and do the work.
Right.
And so you just keep having people untrained. And so as we are able to train those people doing this kind of work, they become seasoned. Without that, you're depending on outside people all the time. It's costing the taxpayer even more money all the time. And we don't want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, one more thing, if I can remember what it was. In the maintenance agreement, it states that a employee of the developer along with the county commissioner and or one of, and one of his representatives will go out and assess the roads prior to the, the work beginning on the development. When, I'd like to see in there, and it's always happened, but it's never been in there, that the developer will purchase a video camera like a GoPro that we can set on the front of a vehicle and we can get together, and this is what we did with the solar, and we go down the road with a video camera. And then we come back after the project is finished and we take another video of that same road so that we can assess the difference in the road. Now, what I've had with developers before is that, well, it's just a few potholes here, a few potholes there and the edges are broken. And what, what they don't understand, that they, they didn't understand with the wind, they, they understood with the best. Because that many trucks going down those roads, while they may not look like that they're being destroyed, they are.
Right.
And they may not come, the, the potholes may not start forming immediately.
And it won't show on the camera.
But, well, that, what I'm saying is that after that first project, it really didn't show that much damage. But I told them, that's going to start showing up. It's going to start breaking out. And whenever they started doing the best, guess what happened? There were potholes that were all the way across the road in several places down eleven oh five. And, and it started breaking out in all kinds of places. We spent a week out there with a driver patcher patching those holes. I mean, one hole took a whole load of rock and oil to do that. And, and so we, we just, people, they, they just don't understand roads. You, you have a hundred, you know, five hundred people a day going down, I mean, just in regular cars. And then you have thirty a day of, of belly dumps loaded going down those roads. They're at some point are going to start busting out, breaking out. And we found that they, they, these guys found this out during the best project. And so just because they look like they don't need to be re-milled, if you have that many trucks going down there, you need to talk to them about it.
They're breaking, they're breaking.
Completely milling them out.
It breaks up and then you get a little ice or something.
That's right. And they become narrower, you know, because of the breakage on the edges. And so you, a lot of developers want you to fix the scene damage and that's good enough. But see what, what's in the contract and, and there's many that have not even said anything about this, is that it will be put back in the same condition that it was whenever the, before, prior to the construction began. Well, whenever you got a bunch of potholes that had been put in there, you, as you know, they break back out nothing. They, uh, it's not the same road. Because of all the potholes, it's rough.
Yes.
It's hard to drive down. And so even at sixty miles an hour, you've got all this roughness. Well, that tears people's cars up. And so we want to put them back to a smooth road in the same width that it was. And, and so I think that's, I think that's all for me to thank the hearings.
I was looking at it. Number eleven does show that they'll name the county as additional insured.
Yes. Just, we just, they all say it, but we just never have gotten the policy.
Gotcha.
And I, and I want to add to, to what Commissioner Williams was saying about us working on these roads. I've been out here for the last, took the first year, we've been in Sean's precinct, Doug's, mine and Will's, his, and it's taking, I had to have twelve guys to do the silco. I've got that, I've got to have a guy for every, so I'm pulling guys from every precinct. And once we place that order for that oil, we're getting charged. And so we've got a certain amount of time we've got to shoot it. And just like yesterday, we were sitting there waiting on oil for two hours because they had a blowout between here and London.
Yeah.
And so that just two hours seemed like it turned into four hours and more. And we've got five miles done. Took us about four, five days to do five miles, so more or less a mile a day if you wanted to break it down that way. We're working on the next two miles today and I've got five more miles after that. And then we moved to Terry Precinct. So I mean, it's, we're still looking at thirty, forty days out before, you know, it just leaves us very few hands to go pat these holes. And like you said, we go pat them and it drives it in, they're beat out again.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's going to take a while.
The, the oh, what am I saying? The side of the road, the shoulder is, I mean, it's, it's dangerous too. Because it, you know, we did have some rain and it did wash out a lot of the stuff. There's a, one road that goes from Road Runner Path to Blockline. And I mean, it's got some deep ruts there in that road. I don't know the name of the road, the number. But it's, it's dangerous going down there. And, and you really have to know, and I mean, if somebody knew coming through wouldn't know it. You can't see it, you know, and then you're off, you're, you're, you're gone.
And that road will just re-bleach you, what, three years ago?
Yeah.
And that's the, that's what these companies are doing. I mean, it's a lot of traffic to keep up with.
Yeah.
And when we're chip sealing, all those precincts don't have anybody to go out and mow, go out and do potholes, go out and pick up trash. We, we do, we do a lot of things.
I know.
And, and, and bleached roads, we're trying to water them so that people aren't taking all of the fines off because in that, you do have to replace them. And so it, it's, it's a difficult job.
That's why I say just don't let them come in.
Yeah.
Don't let them bring all them trucks in. We're not making any money off of it.
That goes back, it's not up to us, it's the landowners.
Right. Yeah, they're the ones making the bucks.
Making the contractuals with them, sure.
And, you know, people like us that don't have the windmill or the, you know, we just have to suffer through it. And our taxes go up because everybody else's is good. And, and we're not good. So we're going to, we're going to fight that too.
But they're paying taxes, a lot of them. They're paying a lot of taxes. And, and we're, we're, we're really glad to have, I've got those windmills out there for me and I hear them. It doesn't bother me at all. I mean, it does some people. It really does.
Well, it's too new to us, I guess.
It doesn't bother me the landscape. I take pictures of it all the time, the sun behind one of the towers. But solar, you're relatively even see that or batteries. You're relative, you'd have to drive there to see it, you know.
I, I wanted, I wanted to make a, a point on this. They're coming anyway.
Yeah.
And having the agreement with the road use agreement, the, the abatement with the road use agreement helps us to keep their feet to the fire to maintain those roads. If we don't have that road use agreement, they can tear up our roads and we can't do anything about it. This way we're able to get something back from them and make sure that they maintain those roads or give us the funds to maintain those roads.
Okay, well, they're just not being maintained is, is my complaint.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your
We're going to get there.
Are you?
Your family.
Okay.
We've agreed.
Any more public comment?
There's one comment.
Go ahead.
You just made the remark that they're coming, they're coming, they're going to come. They're going to come whether you give them tax payments or not. This is the area for it. They're gonna come whether you give them tax abatements or not. This is the area for it. So these tax abatements are taking millions of dollars away in property taxes. We may get a couple of hundred thousand a year for a megawatt or whatever. We're missing out on millions. Because you just said, they are coming. You do not have to give tax abatements.
Most of them wouldn't be here today.
And they're shipping it somewhere else.
Brownwood is a good example. They wouldn't give a tax abatement. To my knowledge, they do not have any of it.
I say more power to Brownwood.
Yeah, me too.
Then we have, most people don't feel that way.
If my electric goes out, them things keep on turning.
If we have a road use agreement, then we can keep.
The power goes somewhere else.
Thank you. Well, you know, you, you can say that about the oil field. You can say that about, I mean, people don't like the oil field.
The oil field employs a lot of people here. The windmills do not.
No, but they pay a lot more than hundreds of thousands. They pay millions.
In 10 years, after 10 years.
Every year.
And then you've been known to renew an abatement for 10 more years. So.
If they completely repower. Yeah, they do.
That's another.
But that's if they completely repower. That's when we do another abatement. Not if they're just going to continue.
And it's not like they're ever going to abandon that solar farm, wind farm, just because you are going to give them 10 more years.
It's not like they are not going to abandon it either. We don't know that.
You come in and clean it up. You didn't have to give them 10 more years.
But look at the, look at the money that's not only coming taxes through, or these payments, but the people that do have property have a lot of it. They are getting a lot of money that's helping our economy because they're spending it here. And so it, it just seems right to, to be blessed by what you have and can get.
You probably need to ask these landowners now after they've pushed us some years how happy they are.
They, they do like them, those that are getting paid.
So did y'all have any response to Terry's comments or anything, or did you want to go over it?
I mean, regarding the road use agreements, Commissioner, I mean, obviously, I'm sure, and I'll specific, I think I know what you're talking about with the solar project. But, you know, I'm sure it was with the EPC contractor that was originally supposed to handle all that. But I think, you know, as you say, these, these folks that are developing these projects, they have to keep an eye on their EPC contractors they hire to make sure all those steps are done and taken care of.
Right, I agree.
And so that's.
And, and we have to talk to them about that. But my response, my, what the response that I received from this particular one was we did not have the ability nor the equipment.
Well, that's not an excuse.
I, I agree. But that's where the county, I don't think there's a commissioner here that wouldn't take care of those roads if they were paid to do so and at a cheaper cost than what any contractor can do. Because sales tax alone with the, the materials kept by, we have local materials. A lot of these guys don't even use it. They'll, they'll drive other places to get it. So, yeah, I agree. It, it states that they're going to do it. But if they don't have, for whatever reason, I don't know what the reason was on this one. But, but we'd rather take care of, I think that we'd all, I think I can speak for all of us, that we'd rather take care of our roads.
But if we can't.
And we can do it cheaper.
If we can't, it's not getting done.
Yeah. Well, we're talking about the roads that the developers using.
Right.
At the time. And so this has never been in the contract, in the road use agreement or in the tax abatement agreement. It's, it's always been that the developer will. What I'd like, what I'm wanting is that the county will add it in there. If the county doesn't, then the contractor still should. But I don't think there's one of us here that wouldn't keep those roads if we're paid to do it. You know, we don't want to go out and they're tearing up the roads and they're, and, and we're not getting paid. We're just doing it. That, that's.
So y'all, we're, okay, the county's already paid to, to fix the roads.
Well, I'm talking about extra damage caused by a developer.
Right.
Okay. So you're not paid to do that unless it's in the co, agreement to do so. Or unless they do it after the fact. And that's what we got with the last solar project on 1105 was after. Now, during the best project, we started maintaining those roads and they paid us for it. Okay? So that's, that's what I'm talking about. So. And please, it, it's in the contract too, that local labor will be used as much as possible. A lot of companies come with their own construction people. And I'm, I'm not talking about putting up batteries and stuff. I'm talking about building a pad, for instance. We've got local contractors that can actually build a pad as good as anybody. Now, they maybe have to go out for bids. And if they can't meet the bid, and I don't know if y'all do or not, whether you have local contractor, I mean, a contractor that maybe do these best all over the country, and you've got someone that follows you. That's what a lot of these developers do. They just have belly dump haulers that follow them. They have, you know, maintainers and things that follow them from project to project. And, and it makes sense to a degree because they know exactly the dimensions and everything that you want and, but these other guys could do that as well. So it says that you will use local people as much as possible. Please, please do that. And that may be your total intention. It just hasn't been in the past.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else in the public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this hearing at 11:15. Mike, I'll get with you on Commissioner Williams' thoughts on the road use agreement. It's, it's number four in there, talking about compensating the commissioner to repair the road. And we'll get after that, after all of this, we'll go over that. All right, let's talk about the reinvestments. Order designating reinvestment zone. We want to designate the reinvestment zone with the listed properties. It's the same one that was there before. I'm not going to name all of the properties.
Calm down.
I'll do it slowly.
Oh, perfect. I'm glad he's here. My brain starts falling out of my ear. Might, I don't know, give me a band-aid.
Any discussion, thoughts?
Judge, I make a motion that we renew the abatement, or the reinvestment zone, I'm sorry, for this project and give you the authority to sign.
Second. All in favor? On both? Or staying? Okay. Taxpayer agreements. Let's start. Do you want to do one or both at the same time? Canyon, storage and flatland storage? Do you want to do those?
I think separate just because of our request for the difference in the amount of money per megawatt for flatland.
Okay, let's start with Canyon.
So I make a motion that we give an abatement to the canyon development and that we allow the judge to sign the contract after the county attorney has read through the contract. And after the judge has maybe worked out the modifications we talked about and, and to sign it and, and agree to it.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Let's talk about the flatland.
Judge, I make a motion that we agree to the tax abatement for flatland solar. That, or flatland bas, whatever.
Yeah, flatland storage.
Okay, flatland storage to the bas, which is the same thing, battery storage.
Yeah.
With the exception that it be a 10% increase because the project is starting and the payment is starting in a lot longer period of time. And give you the authority to sign.
Second. All in favor? Let's get into road use agreements. There are four of them. These two. Canyon Storage Project and Flatland Solar Energy, or there's the solar energy and there's the storage project. And then we have a long star transmission.
We can do all three of the flatland and canyon.
Okay.
For sure, together.
And then do the long star after.
Do we want the changes made on?
We're, we're gonna.
Okay. Yeah. And so I make a motion on the road use agreement for the canyon storage, the flatland storage and the canyon, I mean, the flatland solar. With the modifications that we spoke about this morning, getting together with the county judge, the developer and the county judge and, and the, the county attorney. And coming to an agreement there that makes these road use agreements to where they will work better for the, for the county to be able to maintain our roads during development and pay for that as well as then remit if there's enough damage to completely rehabilitate those roads. And give the county judge, once these negotiations have ceased, an agreement on that give the judge the authority to execute.
Second. All in favor?
Long star is here.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much.
And I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to y'all. I have, I have some questions for you guys. Something I, I, we discussed before, and I'm gonna see if you found anything out.
Cool.
All right. Thank you. I don't think y'all are part of the long star. Jeff, tell us about this.
Okay. Big country's putting in a transmission line from Claytonville onto 180. Which will be coming across Fisher County and coming down 4151. And they've agreed, they want 26 new entrances, groundways put in. And I told them, you know, if, if we put them in, we're stopping right there at the fence and that would, they need these to go on further. And we, when we met several times out there, I told them, you know, if you're going to hire a contractor to get it on in there, and I said it's best just to get it, I gave them to get a contractor to do it all. I don't have time. I don't have the crew right now. Because they're, they have a timeline. They got to be done, I think, September the 16th. And so this, this agreement is just to give them permission to hire a contractor, which to come in there and do all the work and the improvements to the road, because that's all they're going to do to this road is improve it. And which everything will be supervised and all oversee any changes that are done. If I have a problem, I'll get with them and they'll fix it.
Second. County attorney looked it over?
Yes, the county attorney has looked it over and then you'll need to sign it afterwards. I think all of us have signed it today.
Second. All in favor? Is that all of us want to sign it? I believe that is all of the tax abatements. No, it's not. There's one more. This one I'm excited about. This is ROE futures LLC. It's a local, some local guys that have a local business that asked for a tax abatement. So it would be a four-year abatement, 175, 50 and 25 over four years, and then the abatement will end. So right now, we're just looking at setting the date for a public hearing on this. This would have to be led by the city. So the city would do the reinvestment zone, then they would agree to the tax abatement. And then, so in their meeting would be September 8th. They'll publish a public hearing on, on the reinvestment zone, publish a public hearing for the proposed agreement. They would have their meeting on the 8th. We'll have our meeting on the 9th. And I'll go to their meeting to see what they did and let you know in the morning of the 9th what they did. But this one's exciting to me because it's a local company that's asking for an abatement. We hadn't had one before. And I, I really, that's one thing I wanted to see was locals use this as much as anything. So just asking to see if we can set a public hearing, set a date for a public hearing on the proposed agreement. And that date would probably be September 9th if you're able to make that number.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, I love staying.
Okay. No conflict. Okay. No staying.
You did the second. And Terry abstained. Okay.
All right, we have another interlocal government or intergovernmental agreement with Potter County to approve or deny. This is for keeping inmates from Potter County for $60 a day. And it's the same agreement we have with all the other.
Judge, I'll make the motion that we enter agreement with Potter County in regard to the housing of Potter County inmates and the Scourge County deal.
All in favor? Angela, do you want to do line item transfer, budget amendments?
Oh, there's only one budget amendment, and I think I plan on transfers. There's county clerk or election worker, 4,009.50 induced 25 out of elections and travel just to fix the lines. There are, it's treasury bonds, 300 out of other equipment, 300. County welfare, indigent transportation, 3,000 out of doctor medical fees. And library maintenance repair miscellaneous, 300 out of other equipment. And then precinct one road and bridge machine hire, 2,200 out of road material and construction. And then the budget movement is precinct two road material and construction for 30,000 to the other roads.
Those are my approval. I'll have transfers to budget numbers. That's it. Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, approval of the count's payable.
Count's payable is 446,606.19.
You're going to wait until morning to pay the bill.
All in favor? Like y'all knows, I did not personally give you a piece of paper today. It was the last complaint I had. Get from the other, get in here. All right, while we are at 16, 16, discuss tax rate, take representative, schedule a public hearing. So since our last meeting, Angela has done a fantastic job of getting members together for us and making sure that everything's right. If we go with the budget that we discussed and last agreed upon, the tax rate would be 0.5615. And voter approval is 0.5774. So we, we are well within that. We are obviously above the non-revenue rate. Since then, I had forgotten about a conversation that I had with the city manager. And that conversation was, and I have made no promises or guarantees about anything. But the conversation was about brush trucks. See, I looked at Jay and I remembered, you know?
You remember this one?
I do. This is true. Me too. So you, you got an email from Nathan. It talks about why we need brush trucks and what's currently happening with them. I'm going to let Jake kind of go over that just a little bit. If you don't mind, put your own phone.
In your email, Nathan sent, sent everybody a picture of the two trucks. We're still waiting on one more truck to come in. We're still waiting on one more truck to come in. The top two photos are from Pierce, which is Simmons Martin. They're the ones that are building our engines. It's just a front and back picture of it. And then the second one is from Steel Apparatus, which is manufactured over in Anson. And this is a picture of Howard County's fire truck. We currently have one that looks like this, but it's an earlier version, and they have gone in and worked some bugs out of it and has it running. Currently, we're facing our five-ton military trucks are breaking down between the station and the fire. They're old, they're tired, it's hard to get parts for them. And there's not a surplus of any new ones out right now. These trucks that you're seeing pictures of, the driver can pretty well fight the fire with them. That's one of our biggest challenges right now is our volunteer numbers are down real low, and daytime, even weekends, you may just have the driver of the fire truck fighting the fire. Where it is right now, you're driving them trucks with one hand and holding the hose out the window with another, just to get the fire line done. And these are all the new technology. They've got bumper nozzles on them, they got bumper monitors that the driver can actually operate fairly simple and fight the fire.
What's happening with the trucks that we have right now?
Not getting to the fire?
No, we're not making it. Right now, currently, we have one that will not build and hold air pressure. We have one that's got a burst, busted tank on it, and we've got one that's got an electrical issue. We can get them there if we have to, it'll take us a little bit.
With our fleet, like, how many brush trucks do we have?
We have three five-ton military brush trucks. We have two that look like the second truck, one's a cabs one and one's cabs two. And then we've got two grass trucks that I believe are 300 gallons, that the county bought 2011, 2012. And then we've got two trucks that we got from the city that were dump trucks. And they were, were out there, and we've taken and made fire trucks out of them. And then we have one tanker that come from the city that we use, and then we've got a new tanker coming that the, the city's buying.
Is tanker a brush truck type, or is it?
The tanker we have currently right now that we got from the landfill, it does have spray nozzles on it. We can use it on the highway to do the barditch fires if we need to.
Can it get through the shindery?
No. The three five tons are the only ones that we have that can get through the shindery. We rely on the guys with the blades nowadays, used to, when we had those five tons, we'd get in and we'd go and try to avoid some cost on that. We wait for blades to get there to make us a road where we can save some equipment damage. These trucks, you're looking anywhere from two to three years out. That's how far back the manufacturers are. On like Steel's truck, you're looking at two years.
I wonder what, than what Nathan told me yesterday. By a little bit, anyway. My understanding is that most of these are, if not all, are rebuilt trucks from, some are from the seventies?
Yes. Some are old. They've had a better life. Panhandle fires, this is a kind of example. They took and built a fire truck. They were going downhill, fighting fire, car come up from behind them, it hit that truck from the back, and it pinned the fireman between the cage and the tank. It was a homemade truck, like we're fighting grass fires with. They're fighting a liability lawsuit because it's homemade. These trucks are factory, they have specs on them that they have to meet NFPA requirements, so.
All our trucks are home-built also?
Yes.
How many are you wanting?
I'm not, I'm kinda filling in.
And they're at 350 to 380. So then you get into, how are we gonna pay for that? There's a couple of options. We could raise tax rate, we would still be below the lower approval. We could take from those four and a half million that we're putting in reserves, we put less into reserves. Put 1,120,000 into reserves. And then I was gonna ask Angela about Fund 29 and the funds that we get with the abatement agreements that we have. Could we transfer those funds out of there to use? Or is that, once they go there, they designate?
You could, the court could then vote to do that, and you would just, you would have taxed for this. It would be through the other revenue. But it needs to be specified, and then that's earmarked for that, like our Texas class money is earmarked for those kinds, that's what that would be earmarked. So essentially, what we could do is do another Texas class where it's put in there in 20.5, put it in there, hold it there, and then that way, whenever they do have it, it's there and ready to go. And the court has already made the decision in here, and then it, it's done. I mean, we, it still has to come to court for payables, need to transfer it out to pay it and all of that, but it, it could be.
In between this year and next year, it has enough to cover the EMS and something like this, because it's almost 900,000 this year and it's over 900,000 next year.
You haven't used anything out of it this year for Fund 29?
So.
You're talking about 2024, this year that we're currently in, not 2025 that we're working on? Or are you talking about 2025 and 2026?
This could be two years before the truck gets here.
Yeah, so I mean, we could.
We don't have to pay for it till then.
The EMT showed to be one to two years.
Hopefully, that's right.
Not on one. So we use next year's funds, a portion of us to, not this year's. So it'd be at least October before we do set those funds aside. If I, if, if.
Well, if we're gonna earmark it for 2025 to go for that, we could base it off of, we should have prices sooner, and go ahead and move it at the first of the year and put it into the class, Texas class, so that it is gaining interest at that time. And I don't, I mean, currently with the stock market the way it is, I don't know how much longer the interest rates are gonna stay as good as they are right now.
Absolutely. We take it out of that emergency, a billion and a half. Could we put that somewhere that it would be earmarked for that, and it would draw interest?
Any way we do it, it could be done that way.
Right. Yeah.
It's better, actually, without a big, a large amount in that far out, just like Jason does with his EMT, with the ambulances. So with that high of an amount, and it's that far out, it is actually better that if the court plans on doing that in, in January, when the new budget, if it's budgeted in there, then to do it at that point, no matter what fund it comes from. If it comes from Fund 29, or if it comes from deducting out on the emergency revenue.
Well, my point to take to reveal that is if them guys can't get to the fire, that's the issue.
I agree.
A big issue.
Absolutely.
And what I would like to see, just so it goes, if it's put in Texas class in January, it would gain interest until this truck comes in. Okay, yes, it would be inflation. We don't know what's gonna happen to it now, one year or two years. But we take that half million, smooth that thing, put in a Texas class fund for this purpose. That's just my thought.
Sure. From the, what we were planning on putting into emergency reserves?
Yes.
And not take from the abatement money?
Right, because, I mean, depending on how you look at it, when it comes down to, they would get into a fire, or not get into a fire, that's a big, big deal if there's houses and whatnot.
I agree.
Most people don't want our blades in their backyard.
Sure. My only concern on taking it from the emergency reserves that we're talking about instead of the abatement money is we're trying to build up that reserves, and we've missed a couple of years. If we've been lucky so far and not made something that will put us behind in the emergency reserves. And so if we do have something happen, we're, we're having a knowledge behind.
From the clerk's, it was, it was something.
Yeah, and I, I hadn't even thought about the Fund 29 until actually this morning.
And these trucks are not gonna be here for a year and a half, two years. And if the way we're going right now, we're in the same position we were in 2010. And if this thing burns up and they can't get to the fire, and these homes and, and things do burn out, our emergency fund is gonna go to zero.
Well, another thing, it's all these fires, if, if I send two blades in, Jay knows I want a brush truck right behind them. And they, and they're not even really fighting, they're just following our blades, just in case they get in the bind. There've been many times, they are trucking down, I mean, right behind the blade. I don't like that. Well, it's, it's not good for the blade operators. It is not good for the homeowners. It is not good. It's not good in general to be in that situation.
Yeah. With that abatement money, that's an opportunity to build that up, to do, to do the brush trucks and things like that.
Correct. So only if they don't, I mean, who would it be to put you?
January 1st.
Yeah. It's budgeted, yeah, it would still be put in, even though the abatement isn't realized or received until October of the year, we still budget for it in January. Once it's actually received or realized, then it just, it's washed out. But effective the first, whatever, business day or whatever, the first week of January, when we allocate all the funds out, it's the same way what we do with the ad morum. We don't realize, we don't receive or realize all of that right off the beginning, at the beginning of the year. So we allocate it out the first of January to all of the different places where it goes, and then as we receive it in, then we realize it and receive it in, and then it's like washed out, or it's a, it's a negative or a positive, plus, minus, whichever way. So the money, like, I'm sending out letters probably next week to all of our current abatements that are due in October, reminding them, hey, your payment's due. And that's, it's, that's quite a bit for this year. It's 901,000, I think, minus the 25,000, I think, the smaller.
Yeah.
I think minus that one, so it's nearly 900,000 that I'm sending out letters that they're due in October of this year. But that money, we didn't budget it out for anything, so it's also still in Fund 29.
You know, also, we might think, and I'm not, I'm not pointing at you guys this time, so a lot of these projects, these developers that have developed these projects, like in Venergy, they gave 200, now this is over and above roads or anything else, they gave $250,000 to the college, that's why they're named out there on the college sign. Intersect Power that just finished the wind and, or the solar and the best project, they have put in a lot of money into this community and continue to do so. I think there would be others that would possibly help us with equipment like this. This is, this is something that helps the whole county. And now if y'all wanna do that, that's fine. But there are, there are a lot of these projects that are interested. I, I would bet that the company that you work with, very interested in local, and they have already done some of that.
Not that I know of, but.
Wouldn't be afraid to talk to them.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this, make the film at some point, then I'll keep, I'll keep it ready.
Did have a conversation with a company that put a solar farm in. They wanted to do something. We were having a conversation about the kinetic battery the other day. That has changed in scope. They are interested, and I think Nathan's in talks with them on some fire stuff as well. So some of that is coming into play. Possibly it's big, so.
That's the guys that are building the NRDB business out here. It's got the, you can actually see the stories that are going on down there. Yes, and, and that's another one. Yeah, so they're interested in helping already.
So there you go.
Yeah, great.
Well, I will get the film, do it all.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
So why, why are we buying the truck? I mean, we take care of the MS, they're supposed to do fire for them.
We own several of those trucks anyway.
We're doing it because they're out in the county.
It's originally the, the, you know, prevent it was, I seen this in the park. So happy they don't help us with the TMS. I mean, don't get me wrong, you need the trucks.
I get that.
But I feel like the city oughta, I mean, they don't give us anything for EMS. I've got.
He just referenced it.
That's something that Eli and I have been looking at.
Because we did have that conversation last year, and we're getting really close to coming back to y'all with an answer on all of that. So. As far as the numbers and the breakdowns. Me?
We do more.
We have larger tax bases, and they can't afford to buy one of those trucks every year along with the fire athletes that they do buy, especially now with where they're at, and so that's part of the issue as well.
I get that.
And you, you can call Eli at any time, and he will help. He went overboard in helping in many different areas. And, and it costs money to do that as well, just like the golf course, where a lay-down machine, wow. I'm sorry, that was a sore.
Well, I know for a fact, and I you won't talk about spending money that the city spends. We all have access to the dump drive. That's where you look out there, and they just bought some.
And that's, that's something, we'll, we'll get into all of that when we bring the interlocal in.
Okay, so for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
500,000 out of Fund 29, or 350,000?
It, it can go anywhere from 350 to 380,000, so.
You better put that to a price.
So you, you wanna make it 400,000 in case it goes up before?
You know it's gonna go up.
So these prices are like, it's like, they must, they could lock it in. You can now do that. Is it backward?
I know.
Simmons Martin is backward.
Okay.
I know like the engines we're getting, when they did the contract, that's what it is.
Yes, that's EMS uses Simmons Martin. That's what exactly stands.
So if we could lock it in?
That'd be, yeah, that'd be great.
And he locks it in without paying a payment. He locks it in with an agreement.
Well, we need to know before we say, now, if you can lock it in.
If it's coming out of Twenty-Nine, Fund Twenty-Nine, then I mean, it's an, until we move it in January, it could be, you know, a floating number, but Fund Twenty-Nine is all additional revenue funds from the abatements.
Yeah, so we don't necessarily have to until, we've got, we've got time, Rob. Ms. Summers, did you have a question?
She, I had an interview. I do, I wanna follow up with her on, and you on the proposed tax rate, point five six one five. How much more is that gonna generate over the current budget? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here and coming.
The total is nineteen million, seven hundred ninety-eight, four fifty-two over last year's tax rate. Two million, eight hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Eight hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Sales tax, it was tremendously.
Absolutely, yes.
Tremendously.
Three million, I put three million.
Three million.
Yes, because I do foresee that it's, I.
It's gonna start coming up.
Yes.
You know, we're all in the same force precincts, equipment wise. It's an opportunity to, also, okay. And, you know, jails especially. You know, and, but you know, nobody, nobody wants a tax increase. But when it comes time for roads, fires and stuff, then we tell them, our equipment broke down. That's, you know, that, they don't think about that. And, uh, so, um, and people, which a lot of people, they don't think about stuff like that. Till it comes time you need it, and when you need it, you needed them and you ain't got it. And that's, and I'm not trying to justify it, but I guess I kinda am. Because I mean, we don't, good equipment, blades, you know, it comes in fires. But we've all, we've all been there. That's just, not making a point.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Alright, um, any more discussion? So the tax rate would be point five six one five. Generate nineteen million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. It cover, cover everything that we've discussed on the budget. We've also discussed taking, um, three hundred and eighty-four hundred thousand dollars out of the abatement money and setting it aside in a tax class account to gain interest while waiting for a brush truck to come in. Okay, we need to take a record vote.
Jenna said there's not a form for this. She just need to, um, clear about who's voting and all of that, so.
And we also need to schedule a public hearing. We'll do the public hearing on September, not September, August twenty. August.
That's too long.
That's too long, I agree.
Was it August twentieth?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you need a motion to take a record vote?
Yes, sir.
I like the motion that we take a record vote.
A propose, no, you know, a motion on a proposed rate.
Point five six one five?
Point five six one five.
Jeff seconded it. All in favor? All of us. Yes, ma'am. Schedule a public hearing on September twentieth?
August twentieth.
August. I'm trying to get this over with.
Don't drag this down.
I'm trying to be over, already over.
Over, chief.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, uh, we don't have an executive session, nothing further to discuss, so we will adjourn. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you all being here. I'll have to print it out here. I need y'all to go by my office and sign that.